Good evening and welcome to the Monday, September 25th meeting of the Bella Vista City Council. We will start with the invocation followed by the pledge of allegiance if you please stand.
Let us pray. Gracious and loving God, we give you thanks for this time that we are able to discern how best to run our beloved city. God, we pray that you come and be with us as we make these decisions, help us to have civil conversation. And wise decisions. We pray all of this in your son's name, amen.
Amen.
Thank you Pastor.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Move to roll call, sir. All right.
Councilmember Barr?
Present.
Lloyd?
Here.
Flynn?
Here.
Anderson?
Here.
Fowler?
Here.
Councilmember Wozniak is excused.
Thank you. This is the time for citizen input and we have Mr. Doug McCash.
Three minutes Doug.
Three minutes.
Three minutes.
Three minutes, okay. Good evening lady and gentleman. My name is Doug McCash. I'm here on behalf of the Bella Vista Properties Owners Association. There's a number of items on the agenda tonight for your consideration. It's all the POA. Various ordinances A through L, I believe V is named as well. So then just appreciate your consideration for these, there's a lot of property line adjustments that are. We've got here the planning commission. Working with Gene Cooper, Gene Cooper Communities to resolve any issues that the planning commission has had and feel like we're ready to move forward. Just appreciate your consideration for these ordinances. Thank you.
Thank you. Move on to number six on the agenda, the approval of the minutes of August 28th meeting. Are there any errors or omissions? Hearing none, I entertain a motion to approve. So moved.
Second.
Okay, roll call vote. Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Flynn?
Yes.
Lloyd?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Barr?
Same.
Carrie, five zero.
That was an abstain?
It wasn't here.
Okay, so four zero to one, right.
The next is moving on to the monthly financial reports. For those of you who are with us this evening, there are copies of the financial reports at the back table. We continue to be in very good shape. You'll see that there's a lot of green in every department, everybody's sticking to their budgets. I am pleased to report that our year-to-date revenue for combined city and county sales tax has actually increased 8.4% year-over-year. So I want to thank all our residents for continuing to shop here as much as they possibly can. It's greatly appreciated. Are there any questions about the financials? Moving on to item number eight, I would entertain a motion to suspend the rules and read all proposed ordinances and resolutions on the agenda by title only.
So moved.
Second.
All right, roll call. Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Barr?
Yes.
Lloyd?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Flynn?
Yes.
Carrie, five zero.
Thank you. The next motion is unusual, but given the large number of ordinances on the agenda and staff's request to move to third and final, I'd entertain a motion to suspend the rules and move all ordinances, items A to L and V on the agenda to third and final reading.
I'd like to make a motion to move all ordinances A to K and V to third and final reading. I don't think L should be go direct to third and final reading.
Okay, so the motion is A through K and L. You need to ask if there's a second.
A to K and V.
A to K and V, sorry, and V.
Is there a second?
Second.
I'm sorry, which motion to?
The motion is a motion to suspend the rules and move all, move ordinances, items A through K and item V to third and final reading.
In other words, L would be exempt and we would do first reading this evening. L is with regard to the zoning application for multiple parcels, primarily the old Bella Vista area. Okay. Okay?
There's a motion and a second, is there?
Is there any other question or discussion?
Can I?
Yes?
May I withdraw my second?
Yes.
Yes you may. Is there another second?
Oh, second.
Okay. Is there any discussion?
Well, I just thought I'd mention, you know, the idea of going to third and final reading is because things are perfunctory and not controversial. Certainly, I believe all these things are perfunctory and not controversial. I wasn't so sure that was true on L, so I wasn't trying to make a big deal of it. I just thought if we're going to move things to third and final, let's make sure they're you know, all the other ones are things where there's two parties are in agreement, there's nobody in any way that objects, so that's the only reason I wanted to accept that one out.
It would be an order mayor that if, that when we get to item L, if someone wants to move to suspend the rules on that one, you could do it individually and there could be consideration of that separately.
So we can still go back to it?
If, if there's a thought you want to do that at that time.
Okay, fair enough.
Is it fair to ask a question? I mean, is there something specific that?
Well, the debate at this point needs to be limited to the motion to suspend the rules.
Okay, are we ready for a vote?
We're ready for roll call.
Okay. Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Barr?
Yes.
Flynn?
Yes.
Lloyd?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Carrie, five zero.
Okay, fair enough. Okay, the first ordinance is accepting and confirming an easement dedicated to the public on parcel 16-434-12-000 located on land owned by the Veterans Council of Northwest Arkansas and containing the Veterans Wall of Honor and for other purposes.
That's third and final reading.
This is third and final reading, just for those of you that are here. This is the last piece of the puzzle that a company called Trailblazers requires in order to extend the Razorback Greenway from the tip of Lake Bella Vista and begin to bring it into Bella Vista, which is a great thing for us. It'll actually come in and it'll, phase one will terminate down in Blowing Springs so that it can now also link up with the Back Forty Trail system. So that's where this is coming from. Is there any discussion at all? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, roll call vote. Councilmember Lloyd?
Yes.
Flynn?
Yes.
Barr?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Carrie, five zero.
Thank you. The next ordinance B, at the top of the second page, if you're following along, accepting and confirming easements and rights of way dedicated to the public on parcel 16-702-88-000 on Everton Road and for other purposes. This is the first of the?
Third and final reading.
I'm sorry, it's third and final reading. This is the first of the POA and CCI ordinances that are on the table this evening. Is there any discussion? Okay, you may have a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
All right. Councilmember Barr?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Flynn?
Yes.
Lloyd?
Yes.
Carrie, five zero.
Thank you. The next ordinance, accepting and confirming easements and rights of way dedicated to the public on parcel 16-702-83-000 and 16-21582-000 on Glasgow Road and for other purposes. This is the final reading. This too is also the POA and the CCI. Is there any discussion at all? Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion to approve.
So moved. Second.
All right. Councilmember Lloyd?
Yes.
Flynn?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Barr?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Carrie, five zero.
Thank you. Ordinance D, accepting and confirming easements dedicated to the public on parcel 16-702-224-003 on Lancashire Boulevard and for other purposes. This is the third and final reading. This too is the POA and CCI. Is there any discussion at all? I'd entertain a motion to approve.
So moved. Second.
All right. Lloyd?
Yes.
Flynn?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Barr?
Yes.
Carrie, five zero.
Thank you. The next ordinance is accepting and confirming easements dedicated to the public on parcel 16-18881-000 and 16-18882-000, four and six Minnick Lane and for other purposes. This is the third and final reading. This has been approved by the planning condition, sorry, the planning commission with conditions, which is acceptance of plat by CCI, the owners and the utilities. Chris, is there anything to add? Okay. Is there any discussion? I would entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
All right. Councilmember Flynn?
Yes.
Barr?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Lloyd?
Yes.
Carrie, five zero.
Thank you. Ordinance F, accepting and confirming easements dedicated to the public in parcel 16-301-10-000 south of the Metfield Golf Course and for other purposes. This is the third and final reading. This too is a POA and CCI split. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
All right. Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Barr?
Yes.
Flynn?
Yes.
Lloyd?
Yes.
Carrie, five zero.
Thank you. Ordinance G, accepting and confirming easements dedicated to the public in parcel 16-29447-000 at the intersection of Scottsdale Drive and Cullen Hills Drive and for other purposes. This is the third and final reading. This too is the POA and CCI lot split. Is there any discussion? I would entertain a motion to approve.
So moved. Second.
All right. Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Barr?
Yes.
Lloyd?
Yes.
Flynn?
Yes.
Carrie, five zero.
Thank you. Moving on to H, ordinance is accepting and confirming easements and rights of way dedicated to the public in parcel 18-07776-000 in the city's planning area and for other purposes. This is the third and final reading. This is 20.55 acres, Chris? Okay. Are there any comments or discussion?
Yes.
Yes ma'am?
I had a question. I was only looking at the plat on my computer, but it appeared that we were creating a landlocked parcel, is that correct?
I'm sorry, council, y'all are moving so fast, I'm having a hard time keeping up. I believe that we are creating a landlocked area, but if you will notice that there is a 50-foot roadway, it's not a parcel, so the parcel still, it's an analog, still has access to your street. We're in the planning area and we can't require the security.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, I would entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
All right. Councilmember Lloyd?
Yes.
Flynn?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Barr?
Yes.
Carrie?
Thank you. Item number I is an ordinance accepting and confirming easements dedicated to the public in part of parcel 16-70183-000, 372 Bella Vista Way and for other purposes. This too is a POA and CCI lot split. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion to approve.
So moved. Second.
All right. Roll call vote. Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Barr?
Yes.
Lloyd?
Yes.
Flynn?
Yes.
Carrie, five zero.
Thank you. Item J is an ordinance accepting and confirming easements dedicated to the public in parcels 16-13934-000 and 16-13933-000, one and three Brookesham Lane and for other purposes. This is where the owners wish to adjust a portion of the common property, Chris, and I believe this is outside the Cooper Community. Okay? Are there any discussion or questions for Chris? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion to approve.
So moved. Second.
All right. Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Lloyd?
Yes.
Flynn?
Yes.
Barr?
Yes.
Carrie, five zero.
Thank you. Item K is an ordinance amending the map of Bella Vista's planning area boundary and map and for other purposes. This is the third and final reading. This is some of the boundaries between us and the city of Gravitt. And where an area is overlapped by two or more jurisdictions, it's resolved by adjusting the line equal distance from the two jurisdictions. Sum it up, Chris? Okay. Are there any questions for Chris?
No, there are no questions exactly. It's just a, so this isn't necessarily something that Gravitt has agreed to. This is just something that we are talking to and agreeing to amongst ourselves right now. Does Gravitt have any issues with it?
Since I've worked with the clerk as well as Mayor of Gravitt, we're trying to resolve some of these calendar issues between the two planning areas. There was some disagreement over how that was to do, but the main topic of our conversations was at the west corner, northeast corner of the interchange of the White House. They wanted, we wanted to do a stair step and they wanted to add section one or section one, but in this area, the best I know is to plug it with what they have provided to the city of Gravitt and pursue.
And this meets the requirements of Arkansas State law, right?
Oh yes.
So that's really the end of the day.
The law says that the cities involved can agree and if they don't have an agreement, it goes to an equidistant line between, within the planning area between the two cities. And so it's, it gets resolved for us whether we agree or not.
Right. Okay.
Any other comments? Hearing none, I'd entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
All right. Councilmember Lloyd?
Yes.
Flynn?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Barr?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Carrie, five zero.
Thank you. That ends the third and final until we get to item V as in Victor. The next is an ordinance amending the city of Bella Vista zoning ordinance and map by rezoning multiple parcels from A1 to various other zoning districts and for other purposes. This is the first reading. This is the old Bella Vista, which was annexed in 2014, but no zoning was specified at that time. Questions, comments?
I have a comment.
Sir?
I thought I should explain why I didn't necessarily want to go to the third and final. You know, after, at the work session, I expressed some reservations about this and I think it's fair to say most people on council weren't agreeing with me, the ones that were there that day. So in the, in the last week, I talked to Chris Sunnison, who I'd like to compliment for being very helpful with information about all of this. And I talked to Buddy Vernetti and I talked to Gold Evans. Just trying to educate myself and understand what was what. And I have two different concerns about this. One, which I think is, well, first of all, let's talk about the parts I agree. I think it's fine having the commercial zoning down by the 71. And I believe there's commercial zoning where the hotel used to be. I think that kind of thing is rational. What I was concerned about and the special, the part that was done, special residential zoning. And if you read the special residential zoning, the thrust of it is it's making the setbacks and side backs smaller, which I think is fine. The more I studied it, this is what really I was concerned about. I came to realize and understand that in all of Bella Vista, or in most of Bella Vista, the minimum square footage of a home is 1,000 square feet. The developer has different requirements, different places. If there's a golf course, some subdivisions by lakes or golf courses were 1,200 square feet. But the great majority are at least 1,000 square feet. And the way this zoning reads, because it's not in, the ACC really is the one that has 1,000 square feet minimum. And there's also a requirement that there be a garage or a carport. Well, the way this zoning reads, there's none of that. I mean, you could build a house that's 200 square feet. Well, they referred to tiny houses and that's what got me thinking about it. 200 square feet or 300 square feet. And when I went around and talked to a lot of just ordinary citizens, it was very hard to find anybody that thought that was a good idea. I'm just concerned that we're inadvertently creating a neighborhood that could be a problem later. And the second thing I noticed, which I think is inadvertent, when we define manufactured homes, in that part of the zoning, it specifies they have to be on a permanent foundation. And on this specialty residential category, we didn't specify that. So I think you could not only have a tiny home, but have a tiny home on wheels perhaps. And I wasn't sure that's what we intended. So, you know, I would like to see it changed so that you could still have this, the smaller setbacks make sense, because some of these lots are pretty small and you have to figure out a way to build something on them. But I think you could still build 1,000 square feet and have a carport or a little garage, even on these smaller lots. And so I'd like to still have that 1,000 square foot minimum for the protection of, you know, other citizens in Bella Vista.
Okay, other thoughts?
I understand, you know, the concern. So I attended a planning zoning, I'll call it training session down at Arkansas Municipal League a couple of months, three months ago or so. And to your point, you know, so I want to really research this as well from another perspective. And the direction from the municipal league is that it's a real slippery slope trying to regulate the size of homes in a city. And it goes back to economics and, you know, different things like that. But I think we want to be careful right now. I want to give a couple, you know, some phone calls and get some more information on that. So just for what it's worth, before we go down the path of trying to regulate the size of homes from a city. Maybe the POA has something there, a private entity, and I guess that's all well and good. But as far as municipality is concerned, it may not, may not be someplace we want to go.
Okay, anybody else?
Yes.
Okay.
Linda, Linda.
Linda?
Yes, I just wanted to kind of correct something that John mentioned. I believe the minimum square footage is based on the subdivision plat for each subdivision. There are a variety of subdivisions that are 800 and 900 or 1,000. So it's based on the sub, what's on the subdivision plat when that subdivision was created. I did not get a chance to check and see what was on the subdivision plat for this area when it was created as far as minimum house size, so I am deficient that I do not know that answer. However, I feel that this should be pushed forward to third and final reading because of the situation where we are potentially open to issues by not allowing these properties to be developed and that is very concerning to me. And if members of the public were opposed to this, someone would have been here to speak about it tonight.
Okay. Anybody else? Did you want to make a motion to go to third and final reading?
Yes, I will make a motion to take this to third and final reading.
To suspend the rules?
To suspend the rules and take this to third and final reading.
A second.
Okay. Any further discussion? Okay, we'll do the roll call.
Okay, the roll call on?
Just a sec.
I would like to make one comment. It's been since 2014. I really don't believe another month or two is going to make that much difference. With the kinds of questions that are coming up, I still think it's worth time to get through it all before we make a mistake and do something we really find out we don't want to do if people are going to research this kind of stuff. So rather than do it and then redo it in case we have to, one month or two months is not going to make a lot of difference when we've been this way since 2014.
Okay. Fair enough. Anybody else? Okay, we'll go for the roll call vote.
Okay. This is to, the vote to suspend the rules and waive the three readings.
No, no.
Move to third reading, excuse me.
Suspend the rules and move to third and final reading.
Right. Okay. Councilmember Lloyd?
Yes.
Flynn?
No.
Anderson?
No.
Fowler?
Yes.
Barr?
Yes.
Mayor, you may choose to vote on the motion to suspend the rules if you desire.
Um, yes I do.
Okay, so you vote yes?
I vote yes.
All right. So now you need to read it for the third time.
Okay, third and final reading, an ordinance amending the city of Bella Vista's zoning ordinance and map by rezoning multiple parcels from A1 to various other zoning districts and for other purposes. Any further discussion? I would entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
All right. This is the motion to adopt. Councilmember Lloyd?
Yes.
Flynn?
No.
Anderson?
No.
Fowler?
Yes.
Barr?
Yes.
Mayor, you may choose to vote in favor if you desire.
I choose to vote in favor.
So it passes 4 to 2.
4 to 2.
Thank you. Moving on, we start with the resolutions. The first resolution requires an open public hearing, so at this time, I would like to open the hearing. This is regarding the cleanup of a certain piece of property on what I might call Upper Suits S Drive, Suits S Drive. Is there anyone here that would wish to comment on the cleanup of this property?
From the public.
From the public? From the public. Hearing none, I will close the public hearing and read the resolution. It is a resolution approving amounts of liens to be certified to the Benton County tax collector against certain real property as a result of grass-cutting expenses and abatement of other nuisances by the city of Bella Vista and for other purposes. This is the cleanup of the Jackson property on Suitsus Drive for the amount of $5,571.24. Now, Chris.
The only thing I wanted to add to the conversation here is the cost of recertifying this evening was mainly for demolition, chiseled, slinking off of this property. The fire department did an excellent job controlling burning in this structure, and it happened fairly quickly. I cannot speak to how long they were out there, but they did a great live training exercise to put down the industrial fire department, as well as the people at the fire department. So it was a real effort on this particular property, and glad to be on it.
Okay. Any comments from members of council? Hearing none, I'd entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
All right. Roll call vote. Councilmember Barr.
Yes.
Fowler.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Flynn.
Yes.
Lloyd.
Yes.
Carried, 5-0.
Thank you. The next resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with APAC Central for the construction of the Lower Suitsus Drive project and for other purposes. Just to refresh your memory, we went out to bid. The lowest bid was $369,963 plus 10% contingency is $406,959. We did approve in the 2017 budget, $450,000. If you remember, council informed us that once we have the order of possession, soon after filing, then the project can proceed. And in talking with Mr. Kelly today, we are awaiting the appraisals, and then we can start to move forward. Is that fair?
We'll get it filed just within a day or two, getting the appraisals. So we're very close.
Is there any discussion at all? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion to approve, please.
So moved.
Second.
Councilmember Flynn.
Yes.
Barr.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Lloyd.
Yes.
Fowler.
Yes.
Carried, 5-0.
Thank you. The next resolution, accepting a grant from the Walton Family Foundation for the expansion of the city's wayfinding signage system, making budget adjustments to account for said revenue and expenditures, and for other purposes. This is a joint city POA project for 38 wayfinding signs. The Family Foundation has given us a grant for $84,578. Just as a side note, this will tie in with Resolution Q, to be discussed in a couple of minutes. Are there any questions at all? Hearing none, I'd entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Councilmember Lloyd.
Yes.
Flynn.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Fowler.
Yes.
Barr.
Yes.
Carried, 5-0.
The next resolution, authorizing the mayor and clerk to enter into an agreement with Burns and McDonald for Mercy Way Bridge and Corridor Project, making amendments to the 2017 budget and for other purposes. This creates a revenue account to receive the reimbursement grants from RDOT. At the moment, we're beginning the engineering and environment study, which is $321,000, and we will be reimbursed 80% or $256,000. And we need to put that money somewhere, so this sets up the account. And I would like to thank the representative from Burns and McDonald who is here this evening. Thank you, sir, for attending. Is there any discussion?
Okay, so this is for also the actual design of the bridge as well?
No.
Okay. This is just the environmental study?
Yes, yes. It's the first set of the engineering designs and the environmental studies. That doesn't mean that there won't be more engineering studies as we move along, but this is the first out of the gate.
This is a comprehensive design contract. This will include surveying, as well as geotechnical services. It will include all phases of the design of both the roadway and the bridge, as well as traffic studies, personal warrants at the Dartmoor Mercy Way, Long Springs, Lambeth intersection, as well as lane improvements if those signals are not tuned. So this is a complete package. I think the only engineering services we would not be managing at this point would be for actually during construction. So we would have them on site to make sure that the amount of concrete that is actually the amount that we're looking for, for testing or whatever other testing services that we need to have. Stephen, do we get through, did we get through this contract? So we were going to get them through, contract.
Okay. So this is like an off-the-wall question, kind of. So it's actual design of the bridge and what it might actually look like? Or is it, it, okay. And so, since we're having a comprehensive plan, like 2040, and, you know, maybe the future of Bella Vista, what the residents would like for it to look like, you know, aesthetically, things like that. So will any of that be taken into consideration where, you know, we get a bridge, right? It's a bridge. Yeah, it's just a functional bridge, or something that is kind of cool, you know, kind of neat-looking, and can, you know, improve the aesthetics of the city, if you will, because it does run over Little Sugar Creek, and Little Sugar Creek could be considered, you know, as, you know, something that could be beneficial to the city, and maybe could, you know, have future development up and down it. So we would want something that would look like really nice, you know? I mean, again, that might sound off-the-wall, but I'm just curious.
My name's Stephen Bean, of Burns and McDonald. Appreciate you, Mayor, for acknowledging us, and we thank the city for the opportunity to help you out with the project. It is a high-profile project, and that's what makes it so exciting to us to be a part of. To directly answer your question, aesthetic elements in the design can run, can be anywhere on the spectrum. The contract currently doesn't include aesthetic elements in the design, but that doesn't mean that we can't provide some level of aesthetics. The degree to which the city wants to explore that, and kind of what you would settle on, may warrant some adjustment, but, you know, I'm happy to have those conversations. And, for example, the bridges that you see along Interstate 49, you know, they have, it's called form liner, where the palms don't look like concrete, they look like rock. Those sort of aesthetic elements are simple enough for us to integrate into the plans under our current agreement. But if we're talking about certain features above the structure, or certain ways to design the structure, trusses along the sides, and those sort of things, they change the way that we would design the bridge, and those would not typically be included in this base contract. But certainly, we can have that conversation with Chris, or with you all, together, as we progress through the design. If that's a desire of the city, then it's certainly something that we can help you, we can provide those services. I didn't want you to believe that they were necessarily included in what you're bringing out.
Yeah. It's not anything we'd want to probably bust a budget on.
Absolutely.
But I think Gould Evans is maybe possibly identified, Little Sugar Creek is, could be very beneficial to the city of Bella Vista, you know, so we can develop. So if we're going to do that, we may be something we need to think about.
I can tell you that we're already talking, and I mentioned it to Steve tonight, that we do need to have bicycle access on top of that bridge, because it's very dangerous today. And that ultimately is where the next phase of the extension of the Razorback is going to go.
Right.
So it's, it's very important that it be there, and you're right, because we are going to have, hopefully, thousands of people going over that bridge as they travel from Fayetteville to come here.
Just want it to be a little more than functional.
Absolutely, yeah. And we've identified those opportunities, and if it would be worthwhile to have a conversation, to have your planners, you know, come up with some ideas, and then we can be, we can provide some input as to constructability and cost implications and those sort of things.
Okay, okay. Well, thank you. I appreciate it.
Thanks, Steve. Any other questions? Comments? Hearing none, I'd entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
All right. Councilmember Barr.
Yes.
Fowler.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Lloyd.
Yes.
Flynn.
Yes.
Carried, 5-0.
Thank you. The next resolution, authorizing the mayor and clerk to enter into a cost-share agreement, amendment with the Bella Vista Property Owners Association for the installation and construction of wayfinding signage and for other purposes. As I mentioned earlier, this ties back to the previous number O on your agenda. The city portion of this project is $35,000, the POA is $50,000, and then we have the Walton Family Foundation for their $84,000. Are there any questions at all? I'd entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Excuse me. Councilmember Lloyd.
Yes.
Flynn.
Yes.
Barr.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Fowler.
Yes.
Carried, 5-0.
Thank you. The next resolution, amending the 2017 city budget to transfer $9,897.75 in designated reserve funds from ambulance cruise account number 10115677 to Department 30, Supplies and Equipment Account number 52800, recognizing the revenue and authorizing expenditure. This is the very last funds chief from the reserve fund that was set up many years ago, and it's going to be moved into your Supplies and Equipment Account. Okay. So this will deplete it entirely. Okay? Are there any questions at all? Chief is more than happy to answer. Hearing none, I'd entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All right. Councilmember Flynn.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Fowler.
Yes.
Lloyd.
Yes.
Barr.
Yes.
Carried, 5-0.
Thank you. The next is a resolution, appointing members to the board of zoning adjustments to fill expiring terms and for other purposes. In your packet, you will see that the names are Larry Wilms, Harry Newby, Angela Goodman, and Philip Bode. Are there any questions or thoughts? Hearing none, I'd entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Councilmember Anderson.
Yes.
Fowler.
Yes.
Barr.
Yes.
Lloyd.
Yes.
Flynn.
Yes.
Carried, 5-0.
Thank you. The next resolution, authorizing the mayor and city clerk an HGAC cooperative purchasing agreement for the purchase and installation of fire station alerting equipment in an amount not to exceed $73,000. This amount of money is in the 2017 budget. There is a justification sheet in your package that's been prepared by Chief Sims. Chief is here if you have any questions.
That got cut off, Mayor, in there. It's pursuant to, it's a contract with Westnet Inc. That's not in there. That's who we're contracting with.
Okay. And we're covered by the...
That's why we don't have to read resolutions.
Okay.
You know, so I had visited with Chief Sims today about this system, and it's part of a two-phase process, actually. And the second phase will be implemented in 2018, if this is approved. But if you don't mind, it's really the second phase that I think is really the more critical and places, you know, importance on passing this ordinance or resolution tonight, whichever it is, resolution. If Chief doesn't mind, maybe just the highlights on the front end, but then focus more on the second phase and what that will do for the city and the residents, because, again, that's a really critical piece, I think.
Okay, Chief, you're on.
I'll leave for council members back up, they're sitting right here.
Yes.
This basically kind of sets out the first phase, which truly the second phase is one of the most important phases of this project. What we're trying to do here with the first phase, that we're trying to envelop a little redundancy with our radio system. Several, several years ago, the city went out for a grant, and got an upgrade to the radio system back in 2009, where we went from analog system to a digital system. And with that digital system, it basically created a, probably a border between the analog and digital world. So what that means as far as, as far as redundancy goes, it'll help us maintain our analog system, as well as our digital system, and our digital system, that goes down. That's what part of the first phase is for. So we can monitor that system all the time, and if that digital system goes down, then the analog system will automatically transfer through that system, and we'd have the analog system as well, if we needed to dispatch that digital system down as well. It also will provide safety checks every 10 seconds, to make sure that that system's still online. So currently, right now, if we have, if we have a tower go down in the city, we have three towers here, that side, and the central power down on this side. If the tower goes down, a lot of times, that's not found, or found out until one of our officers or fire personnel, or streets are on the radio trying to communicate. If they can't communicate, then they, they start looking at where the issue might be at. For in the Highlands area, out on the west side, then they start looking at the Highlands Tower. What this system will help us do, will help maintain the consistency with our radio system. So if our radio system's down, we'll know instantly. The west side tower's down, and we can start figuring out how to handle it. That's what the first phase of this system lawsuit is. It'll also help with, um, reduce firefighter stress when we dispatch. And as I was, I was telling Councilmember Fowler, that right now, when a tone goes out, goes off, then it's a high-pitched, screeching noise, that wakes the firefighter out of bed when they have a call. What this will do, will be a little bit more kind dispatch tones, okay? So it'll start at a lower tone, you kind of ramp up to a higher tone, just to help with that stress. Whenever they hear that tone, it's immediate, heart racing, adrenaline flowing, and the dammed-uped heart. So that will also help, this phase will also help with that. It'll also give the red light visual, as the, as the tone goes off, the red light comes on, it'll be tied in that system you already have before. We kind of built that system to kind of, so this system right here will tie into that system. All of our other stations, we're trying to work towards that, have the same type of system inside of it. They'll give us a gas shut-off, or kind of, the system will tie into that. It'll give the availability for all of our fire stations to have that ability to shut off gas, and drop cooking. It'll shut some of the stuff down, if they need dispatch a call. These are all part of the, of the first phase. It's got to be done before we can move to the second phase. And there's all, there's all kinds of other things automated for, like we talked about, gas shut-offs, and other types of protections we can do in the future if we needed to, like with other fire stations, as far as traffic signal, things like that. Now, the main, the main thing is phase two, which is very important, that it kind of ties into the dispatch. So when dispatcher receives that call, with this system, as we, as we implement this system and put this system in place, when a, when dispatcher receives that call, the computer is automatically disseminating where that call's going to go to, and what units are assigned to that call. So the dispatcher's there on the phone, talking to the patient's need town, or if there's a house on fire, or if there's an emergency and so forth. That's already, it's assimilating that call, and it automatically starts pushing that information out to automated voice, where that call is originated from, or that, that unit, if it's a medic unit, a fire unit, where they need to go. Automatic dispatches is sending that information out. That's part of the second phase. It'll be great for the dispatcher. It'll also send an automated text and automated emails where the dispatcher's not having to do it. It'll pull that information out, disseminate it, push that information out to the firefighters' EMS personnel who are going to those cars. So that's part of, and that's all through the dispatch. It keeps that dispatcher from having to stop off the phone of emergency, where she's good to turn around, and having to do that with dispatchers. her hours, and having to do that with the dispatcher's. So it's kind of helping greatly that dispatcher, I assume, their job for a mission. And of course, the automator, the auto alerts that we hear in our stations, if it's busy today, we're outside working, the calls may be louder. After a slippin' night, the calls will be lower, and those rampant calls from there. It'll also give some status, electronic status boards, especially in dispatch. For that dispatcher, this happens often where a unit is assigned, an ambulance is assigned to a call, or a fire truck's assigned to a call. Another call comes in, and that same ambulance, that same unit that's already on the call gets assigned again to a call in their area. Well, that takes time when you're, when dispatchers are, they realize that I sent that ambulance out, or that ambulance back in service, if you need, then they're sending that other ambulance out. That takes time to change that dispatch log and a call log to another ambulance or another fire truck, or a fire unit. So what they'll do is they'll give the status board inside dispatch, where they can see what units are in service or out of service at any given time during their, during their workday. So that's part of the second phase. First phase has got to be in place before we can start the second phase, which would be a great, a great help for dispatchers.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions for Chief?
Thank you, Chief.
I'd entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
All right. Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Lloyd?
Yes.
Flynn?
Yes.
Barr?
Yes.
Carried, 5-0.
Thank you. The next resolution, amending the 2017 budget for the Dartmoor Hawk Project and for other purposes. This is the never-ending Hawk Project. Chris, do you think this will be the very last one now?
Oh, no, would you? We have even more hawks on the way. This resolution simply corrects an issue from the last month where we didn't establish a revenue count for the person that we received.
All righty, fair enough. Frank will get there.
I hope so. Understand.
Are there any other comments? All righty, I'd entertain a motion to approve.
So moved. Second.
Thanks.
All right. Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Barr?
Yes.
Lloyd?
Yes.
Flynn?
Yes.
Carried, 5-0.
Okay, the next is an ordinance, and we're moving back into the world of third and final reading, waiving the requirements of formal competitive bidding and authorizing a cost-sharing agreement with the United States Corps of Engineers, Little Rock District, U.S. COELR, related to a flood study of Little Sugar Creek and its tributaries and for other purposes. That is the third and final reading. Chris, this is what we've been discussing in past months, where it'll be a complete study of the watersheds that are feeding into Lake Bella Vista, which, of course, impacts Little Sugar as well. And it hopefully will end result that we have new floodplain maps, being careful what we wish for. However, we do need them. And is it still correct that the monies that we are paying to go towards the joint project on the hydro studies with the POA will be accepted by the Corps of Engineers?
A proportionary of will be. Approximately, if you wish, God, it's a, exhibit attached to the resolution is the cost-sharing. There is a schedule of these timelines. So we are utilizing the POA's cost-sharing for what I would call the main core of the cost-sharing agreements through Bella Vista. We're actually able to utilize approximately $30,000 of that contract as in-kind matching funds for this cost-sharing. The second phase that will happen in 2018 will actually be about $66,000 that we're budgeting for the survey work. So as they do these hydrology studies, one of the things that's hypercritical, making sure that we've got good information, is actually checking out the elevations of box culverts or the bridge elements or what have you, so that they understand as they model how much water is able to flow there and what elevation. So that is part of our cost contribution to the cost-sharing, two phases over 200 seconds.
I mean, these new floodplain maps as well, I mean, they could be beneficial to Bella Vista, because currently, the way the floodplain is drawn, there might be some land that's currently considered in the floodplain that may not be when it's done, that could be developed in the future. Don't know, but it's possible.
Possible, yep, absolutely.
Could also be the other way around.
It could. I understand that. But at least we'll know.
It's a double-edged sword.
Yeah.
Any other comments? Hearing none, I'd entertain a motion to approve.
So moved. Second.
All right. Excuse me. Councilmember Lloyd?
Yes.
Flynn?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Barr?
Yes.
Carried, 5-0.
Thank you. Moving into the world of meetings and announcements, I'm going to ask Mr. Kelly just to give us a quick update on an issue.
As we have discussed ongoing over the last year, the water purchase that we are undertaking with the city of Centerton, I mentioned to you a couple of meetings ago, the possibility that the city of Gravit may try to go to court and sue regarding their proposed transaction. I learned late last week they have in fact done so. The city of Gravit sued the city of Centerton and Centerton Water and Sewer Commission late last week in order to force a sale to them of a portion of the area that is being negotiated between the city of Centerton and us, which currently lies in the city of Gravit. We don't, as the city of Bella Vista, we do not believe that has merit. The city of Centerton has not yet filed a formal response to the lawsuit. Best information I can tell you is they agree with us that their suit does not have merit. So in any event that litigation has initiated, we have, with your permission, as you know, engaged the Mitchell Williams firm with relation to the acquisition of the agreement and to help us coordinate all aspects of this, really with an eye toward, we thought there would end up being some litigation as well regarding this. I've consulted today with our attorneys with Mitchell Williams. We're reviewing that lawsuit and considering to what extent the city of Bella Vista needs to, or needs not to, take any action with regard to that. It's quite possible that we might come to you and ask you for some guidance in a way, by means of a special meeting at some point between now and our next meeting. I don't know that. It just kind of depends. But everything is still on go. There have been no quarters issued to stop anything. There's been no temporary restraining order. There's nothing that prohibits us proceeding. We are proceeding. The city, here in just the next few days, with the assistance of our outside counsel and our assistant who's been helping us with our water issues, Mr. Wilmes, prepared appropriate application to the state Arkansas Natural Resources Commission to get that process proceeding. This is part of the regulatory approval that has to take place before this proposed transaction can close, and we're moving ahead with that. So we're moving ahead, and we'll see, I guess, what happens in the litigation. But I did want to advise you that that did in fact occur, and so I'll keep you advised.
Thank you.
Any idea, timing-wise? Is this something that could drag on forever?
Well, nothing, as I said right now, there's nothing in place that slows down our process. In terms of litigation, if it ends up going to a jury, which I doubt it would do, it's going to be an issue of law in this case. I think you're talking about a year or more. We're proceeding as if there will be no delays. Our friends in Centerton are kind of in a difficult position, because they've, we're working with them, they've got obligations to us. Now they've got another city who's suing them, saying, no, you've got obligations to them. And so we firmly believe and intend to work closely with Centerton. We think Centerton will work closely with us. And so I just can't answer that right now. There's a chance, but we'll just have to see.
Okay. Thank you. Other questions? All right. Thank you for the update. The next city council work session will be October 16th, 2017, at 5:30 PM in the City Hall Conference Room. The next regular meeting of the city council will be Monday, October 23rd, 2017, at 6:30 PM, right here in Legion Hall. And the Planning Commission work session will be Thursday, September 28th, at 4:30 PM in the City Hall Conference Room. The Planning Commission regular meeting will be October 9th, 2017, at 6:30 PM in the City Hall Conference Room. And the Board of Zoning Adjustment will meet October 17th, 2017, at 7:00 PM. Chris, where's that meeting being held? At City Hall Conference Room. Thank you. With that, thank you very much for attending this evening, and we are adjourned.